Summer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Matt Charters is here.
Matt Charters is here.
Okay, Matt Charters is here, so we're gonna bring Matt again, and this is on the special permit. We're just coming out of second session and we're going back in. And Matt Charters is here on a special permit related to 533 East Main Street, and Matt, take it away.
Sure. I will be brief.
Catch your breath, Matt, catch your breath.
These are pretty straightforward.
Okay, Matt.
We're gonna do them both first, 533 and then 75.
Okay, so I'm gonna edit up.
Whichever.
We're gonna have Matt, planner Matt Charters here to discuss matters surrounding a special permit application for 75 East Main Street. Matt?
75 first, okay. Jennifer, you wanna come up? I don't know if Mike's here or not, that's okay. That's all right. Okay, so we have a special permit application, 75 East Main. It's for a daycare center in DC1. It's required by code to get a special permit by the town board. Just some things that everybody should know about. This is with an existing building, not even the whole thing, the first floor, about 2,500 square feet in the back. No parking is required, it's in the parking district. That's pretty much it, I don't really see any negatives, this isn't used that we want downtown.
Are you gonna use the back as an entrance?
That, yes.
Cause that would be so much easier for parking for your customers dropping in.
That is our entrance.
Good.
Yeah, that's the main entry point. That's pretty much it, like, there's not too much to it. It needs a public hearing.
And what's the zoning on it?
DC1.
Okay, and the use on it, the property, does it say daycare?
It says daycare, yeah, so it's in the rear portion of the building, the ballet school's in the front.
Right.
And then this is gonna be in the back.
Is this vacant space currently?
Vacant space.
More vacant space going on Main Street.
Yeah, I mean, cause we want people to, the Lamonts. We want people to live and work downtown, walk around, engage. Obviously, you need daycare to do that.
You talked over to him for an hour or two.
Daycare is one of the primary items noted in all our studies for downtown, too, so we're...
So, for example, you may have a date night with a couple, right? They have children, and they can go to the theater, they can go to dinner. Kids are safe, pick 'em up nearby. Put 'em in the car and go home.
That is correct.
That, right.
Yeah, I distributed a report to everybody, it kinda goes in depth on the special permit requirements, but pretty much, it's pretty much.
I'm familiar with the project, and I think it's great, and thank you for coming downtown.
Thank you.
So, if the town board is comfortable, there's a resolution drafted to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting, if that's all right with everybody, and then the public hearing would be on the 18th.
Okay, schedule it, make sure that there isn't any conflicts with our office on the 18th.
Got it.
Cause I know we have a lot of public hearings coming up.
Yep.
And so the next matter, Matt, you're up again, and we have...
Remarkable debate here. You won us over.
You took so much time, good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Matt, you're up again on a special permit related to 533 East Main Street, and take it away.
Yes, Amanda Moore here, she's one of the property owners, this is 533 East Main.
Good morning.
This is Moore, how are ya?
Yep, so, everyone's familiar, this is DC3, this is the property just to the east of Jerry and the Mermaid and the hotel. It's a pre-existing three-family residence. They're looking to demolish an existing shed and garage and build their own, a garage for their own personal use. It's considered an expansion of a non-conforming use, that's why it's a special permit. Again, this requires a public hearing. There's not really too much to it. I did distribute, I believe the clerk's office should've gave you elevations of the garage.
Yes.
There is a second floor, I've been told by the owners, that's only gonna be for storage. This is in wetlands jurisdiction, so that's part of the need for this garage, it's the property's...
That water creeps up there every once in a while in the backyard.
Yep.
My Christmas decorations are in the basement, and I am so nervous every time that my husband will be there to help me with the pumps, so I'm like, to put them on the second floor of the garage will be so good.
That's nice, I'm looking forward to seeing that.
Not kitchen, not rental, speaking of...
Not rental, and we can add that as a condition.
I did notice in your report that you sent that it said no water, which we're not gonna have water inside the garage, but we're gonna have a spigot outside.
Spigot's fine, just, it's in terms of like, cooking facilities.
No, we just wanna be able to wash, like, wash the motor engine.
Which I don't think is a bad condition to have, it can't be an apartment in that zone, and it's a three-family house anyway, which you can't have an apartment, but we can make that explicit.
And I will say that the work that you've done on the house since you got it, it's probably the most, or the best-looking three-family house in the town of Riverhead.
Thank you.
Done a lot of nice work on it, you restored it to what it should've looked like back in the day, and I appreciate that, it's a nice addition to Main Street.
My husband and my father-in-law have done a good job.
Yeah, I've seen Garrett out there working on it over the years, so, good.
Can you put up your Christmas lights right before the tree lighting?
Right, let's coordinate this.
Yeah, can we coordinate? That's on the ninth, I believe, so, double check, the second on the ninth.
I'll add it to my calendar.
Yes, please.
Yeah, and then, just in terms of wetlands.
Stipulation for the permit?
Yes.
They are in wetlands jurisdiction for both DEC and for CAC. They got a DEC permit last summer, and they got CAC approval for the project as described in January. So, again, just looking for a resolution for a public hearing.
No brainer.
Fine, go ahead, good luck.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
I hope you all get lunch.
Yes.
Thanks, Matt.
So, as we are, as we are moving away from the sequence, unfortunately, due to time constraints and so many, so much of the public care, I think we're gonna now go forward to thank you, Mr. Ben Wettering, for being so patient, and so we're gonna call him up, and that's gonna be on matters surrounding a possible flower plot at or near the town square. Good morning.
We even have the tape on our side, look at this.
How are you all?
We'd have...
Good afternoon, how are ya? Nice to see ya.
We'd have pizza, skinny's.
How are ya? Good to see you again.
Hey, how you doing? Likewise. I still have to talk to the county about that method, I promise you I'll try to get it done this week.
Okay.
Okay. So, good morning, what do you have for us, it sounds interesting.
Well, I don't know if they're gonna put pictures up right now or not, but just go back a little bit, maybe 50 years. Riverhead had an image 50 years ago. And I don't think it has changed much. And Ivy Agus tried to do its work over here, we hired Judy Jugonski, and I think she was on the town, on our payroll for 10 years, helping the town beautify it. It worked, but there was time to move on. Some other things comes along, you know, and sometimes they come along just at the right moment. So, one of the things that, you know, I was born in Holland, so I know a little bit about bulbs, and one of the things that I thought would be interesting was two things. To have an image whereby anybody that comes through, not just our town, but goes through Sound Avenue, and then you go through the double-lane highway down all the way to the ferry, if they can see what beauty could come from, and it could be, so, it comes in with bulbs. Daffodils, daffodils is a, it's not a tulip, a tulip blooms once a year. Daffodil blooms every year, and every year it just gets better. And so, we grow a lot of daffodils ourselves, we grow every year about two, three million or so. I can get daffodils and get them planted over here. There's now machines that will plant that, at a rate of around 20, 20,000 an hour. I propose that you plant on both sides of the street, maybe three, four rows. The machine comes out of Cornell, and it's in the Ithaca, they did all the testing over there, and they're willing to bring it over here, and we do it over here. Summerford was done when the supervisor, not the supervisor, the county executive.
Steve Malone?
Steve Malone, when he was in Babylon, and they did a whole strip over there.
Can we show that picture? This is it.
All right, well, this is a different one. Okay, this is 231 in Huntington. All right? And it was a beautiful display, it looked real great, but there was only one problem. You know, the problem was, when the foliage died, started to die, it doesn't look as good. So, they went in there and they cut the grass, right? When they did that, there was no more bulbs either the following year. All they had to do was just wait two more weeks. And, so it's an educational part. I'm hoping to use the county, the town people, the highway department, because they cut the grass, they do this, and let them help with us to plant the bulbs, or they have the equipment. So, so anyway, that nice scene, you'll never see again, but Steve put that together in those days, so that's why I think we hope you're to reach out to him.
Yes, I intend to. And I'm gonna see if we can try to get some funding for that, Dawn, is there anything for that?
So, Emery and I were just discussing that.
So, you know, the town board's aware, and it was publicized not long ago, a couple weeks ago, Suffolk County just raised the hotel motel tax significantly, and even prior to that, there was funding put in place that towns could request the funds. Now that it's been amended, there's more money in the till, and a designation specifically for the towns, including the town of Riverhead. So, I think if the town board is supportive of this, we should, I mean, it's certainly related to the tourist industry, that we should make application for those funds for this project. So, I actually testified at that, at that legislative meeting a few weeks ago, and I didn't know that it was about it, which is good to see, and that's why, the reason I did go to the legislature on behalf of our town was to be able to advocate for some of that money. I believe I was the only supervisor that went, I actually think I missed a town board meeting for that, too. And so, this is something that's dear to me, dear to my heart, and we do have a great relationship with the county executive, and the fact that he knows my engagement, and we are a tourist area, in fact, right? Let's go back to Forbes, right? A destination spot, make sure that we use that. And when we play out, and Forbes made us the 11th across the world, we placed 11th in the Forbes, so I think things are looking really good, and I'm gonna personally take this up, and we'll be, we'll be speaking.
All right.
And I just need to know an approximate amount of funding, how much are we talking about?
So, let's just dream sometimes, right?
Okay, we all do that.
If you're gonna start doing this, let's put the East End on the map, all the way. Two or five-year program, not just one. The first year, we're gonna do Sound Avenue, and, you know, it looks like I'm gonna do all the planting. I'm just here to advise you what could be done, cause my background says this could be done, it's not a difficult thing to do.
Is Young Buck gonna do the planting?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have the town hire the department doing it. So, the first year, Sound Avenue, second year, 25, third year, we're gonna start working from east, from south to east.
From west to east, running the north and south roads.
So, at the end, you're gonna get every road done. And wherever the crossroads are, so, it becomes an educational part for the kids. We're gonna use a, an order, a big order that's three feet wide, we'll drill a hole, and the kids can plant the bulbs in there with some protection for the police, it won't take long, but they'll have something to see five years down the line, 10 years down the line. But then, the East End, or at least the North Fork, will be a destination, and it's in agriculture. So, cost-wise, it goes by demand, and do they have it? If I would've been here last year, there was no bulbs. This year, I'm fortunate enough that they do, and you want a bulb that comes back, all right? So, and a variety, we have to be able to get a variety called Colton. And Colton is an old standard variety that multiplies very easily, so, that is good. I could get 100, I could get a million bulbs for 150,000 dollars. That's pretty good, because normally bulbs go for 50 to a dollar. So, here we're talking about 15 cents, maybe a little less, a little more. So, price-wise, as I think, you gotta plan in the future, you can't have this whereby...
One-shot deal?
Well, it's a one-shot deal, I have on hold a million bulbs. And I'm gonna be flying over there the next, whatever, next week or so, to make sure that they're gonna stay there until we buy them. Otherwise, they're gonna go on open market and they're gone. But for the next four, five years, they gotta do this, because those growers have to plant those bulbs, and they gotta know that there is a market for it over here.
What's the most opportune time to plant these bulbs that you're talking about?
It's gonna be November.
This walk?
And so, and it's also good timing for the highway department, cause I think it's, they've got much to do, the grass doesn't grow anymore.
No snow yet.
Right, no snow, right, they put snow fences, but...
Leaf pickup.
Leaf pickup. I was just gonna say, leaf.
What are you talking about?
How many bulbs did you put in in that ice slip job?
Oh, I think there was something like about 60,000.
60,000.
But here we're gonna go up, here we're gonna go up, and we're gonna do it right. I'm gonna be traveling to Europe also to have a look at another piece of equipment, that might be, we'll plant three or four rows, and it'd be a lot simpler in Asia, except for a single row. If you do a single row, I gotta go back and forth, back and forth.
If you're looking for, you know, clear examples, although it's a trial area, if you go on Sound Avenue in front of Cornell Corp Extension, or the research farm, sorry, you'll also see the daffodils. Now, that is a mass planting, which will give you the idea of what it would look like right now, when it would start to bloom, but you'd also see different varieties, so, you just push the variety portion aside, but you'd see what a mass planting along Sound Avenue, it gives you a realistic, it's like 50-foot-long section. To see how it, you know, how it would perform, and that was past year's planting, so we're not talking about something that we just dropped in today. So, you'll see how that longer-term aspect that Jack's talking about would be beneficial, that we start in an area, and then go into, you know, the most traveled, along our green belts or our beautiful corridors, going out to the East End, and then doing the side streets and embellishing corners, parks, intersections, that we can really color up the areas for spring.
I think it's a great idea, I just wish that Mike Seleski were here, so that we could bounce this off of him, being that the highway department may be responsible for a lot of the work here, but I love the idea of the color and making it a destination for beauty.
We, granted, we made, we made an assumption about highway department, and I don't mean that disrespectful, it's just a way of saying, you know, as business owners and operators, we looked and said, all right, there's a lot of synergies, equipment, teams, timing, so, that was an assumption, but it's not against his team or anything, where it's like, it's an opinion of ours, that there's, there's existing groups that could do this without, without it being too much of a burden, and without a doubt, we're here to support them on all the aspects.
So, I have a question, Emery, how much, this doesn't go through Discover Long Island, then, right? This comes directly from the county to us?
That's correct.
What's allocated to us?
So, it's broken up the 10 towns, 1 million each, so it's in our million split, it is Riverhead, Southold, let me just get it correct for you. It is, uh, Riverhead, Riverhead, Southold, Southampton, we split a million, but it's not Riverhead, I'm sorry, Riverhead, Southold, Shelter Island, Southampton, and East Hampton. 150,000. No, 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 it's 1 million per year shall be utilized in support of, there's no definition as to how it, how it's allocated amongst the towns.
So, we're splitting, we're splitting a million between those towns?
Again, it's not a split.
Southampton might be getting more because it's a larger town, larger population.
It depends on your project, what project are you voting?
So, you can't just say it's 200 each, five towns, a million, and then everybody's...
Okay, well, hold on, I was the one that testified, I was the one that was there, and I do have a sheet of paper, I have to find out that there was an allocation, and you don't have access, that wasn't in the print, but I do have some allocation, I'll just have to, I'll call up with them and find out. All right, I'm reading from the law.
Yeah, but objectively, it's a regional benefit anyway, so, just because...
But it does go to, it does, most of that money was coming from Long Island Vision, was gonna, and they distribute it, from what I understand. Yeah, 6 million of the dollars... Is also going. Goes to a not-for-profit tourism promotion agency that has experience with tourism promotion on Long Island. That's a separate category, that's 6 million, that's separate.
So, I have a question for you guys, so, I mean, you plant down Sound Avenue, I understand your concern, you don't want our highway department mowing, which, perfect sense.
Only...
For two weeks.
Only in the spring, we're not talking about any other time, right?
Okay, but here's my question, I know there are parcels on Sound Avenue where people will go and mow right up to the edge, how are we gonna deal with that?
We're gonna have to find a way whereby we need addresses from each one, and ask them, do you wanna have bulbs planted?
Okay.
You're gonna have to follow the guidelines, because if you're gonna go and cut your grass, there's no sense in cutting, you're not gonna get bulbs.
Okay.
And we're gonna try to see where they're gonna be planted. Not everything fits just right, it just sounds good, whereas very hilly, the machinery can go up there.
Right.
All right? And we certainly don't wanna have these falling down. So, it's, it has its good points.
Much like some places, people go to view the cherry blossoms this time of year, or a little bit earlier, around the 1st of April or so, this would be our draw to, come see the daffodils, come see what we've done here, and it would be recurring every year, and I think it's a great idea.
When you, when you do something on a mass scale, and that's where Jack had talked about, you know, let's, let's be visionaries about this, it's not, you know, certain tasks are one and done, but this is as a vision, is greater, longer period of time, and the long-term benefits are certainly there to, to, you know, encourage the Riverhead town and people coming through, not just to like, we're not just to pass through.
Right.
This is the destination, and one of those aspects is the beautifications that we've put through.
Absolutely.
And without a doubt, as we've done in the past years, I mean, Jack used to pay us with bagels at the end of planting Main Street and the flower pots, and the circles, and Second, and all the side streets around it, we believe that we have teams of volunteers that would be helpful in doing some of the things that we're asking, contacting the neighbors, community outreach to support the town. Granted, we're leaning on, you know, monies and equipment and teams, but we can work our own rolodexes to get local support, you know, boots on the ground, per se, to make this work out.
It's always good when you have a, it's always good when you have a member of the committee come here, be engaged, beautify the community, who did their research, needs a little help from us, and we're gonna do this, and I'm gonna research my papers, I know that there was a lot of talk, the supervisors have also spoken about this, it was presented to us, and we had some additions, additional money that we were hoping we were gonna get, so I'm gonna see where it all lays actually in the county, and I'll be, I have my commitment that we're gonna, I'm gonna work as hard as we can, and the board will, you know, looks like they're gonna support it, you know?
One of the things, you probably don't see them, well, you don't need to see them anymore, but Dan Fricki, anybody remember Dan Fricki?
Yes.
And we did a project of planting 5,000 trees in the town. Now you see it, because now they're, you know, 30 feet.
Yeah.
And the idea was, we needed shade, you can't just have, and of course, some of the farmers said, oh, wait a minute, I don't want no tree, I'm plowing right up to the edge, so, some of the trees never got anywhere, but, but it was a neat project. And this would be similar, and I think you will get a lot of publicity out of it, a lot of good publicity, and that's what this town needs.
It's great.
Some more things. So, I do wanna take, when you do get that allocation, some of the money that we can go and plant three to four rows, because that makes it much easier and much quicker to do the job.
It's more dynamic, too, cause when it starts to spread, it's just gonna get really...
Because every time one row, it's, it's, it's difficult, but they had to start somewhere, so they did one row, Cornell, got the machine, and we can get that machine, and...
Good, okay, thank you.
You probably have seen some of the plantings that is happening on exit, was it 68, no?
72?
72.
Yeah, I love New York.
No, no, the one that is planted in Moritzis, is all planted by that machine, the Weiss company does it, so, drink a lot, but drink a...
Yeah, water drinker.
Water drinker in...
Drink a lot, it's good.
Okay, then there was one, okay, then there was a second one, and that was, can we do something like... Okay, then there was one, okay, then there was a second one, and that was, can we do something like that as a destination in the town itself somewhere? And we came up with some ideas, and I guess the latest idea that came through was, how about the circle right over by the hospital? You put a flower clock up, and, and actually theoretically, you'd need two, one going west and one going east. But these are things that has been done all over the world. This is out of Chile. I have traveled to a hundred and seventy countries, and I take pictures from all over, and the rest of the world is doing it, and there's no reason why we can't do this right here on the house.
And all, all the colors, even the blue, that's all flowers, which would then get changed out as the seasons transition.
It changes with the seasons, and you have enough growers over here to grow flowers. You get them involved in a sense whereby you have a little competition, because that's what they do in Europe. You can put Rice's name up there with a nice plaque saying, all of this was planted, maintained, and taken care of by the Rice family. Well, the Kyle family is gonna say, how come our name isn't there? And they were gonna go through the Sartre people, we're gonna ask them also.
Bring it on, Jack, beautification.
We tried, we, we tried to do that a while back, remember, somebody was gonna sponsor.
Yeah, but we were talking about pricing and what we can do, so that, that traffic circle is half in that CDBG area, so we would.
What, what was full?
Just the south half, but.
Your pencil light can.
I know, we'll figure it out, but we can, we can work with the county, I'm sure, to make sure that that works, and we'll be able to figure, we're working on getting pricing on that now. I also think, and I know your preference is there, but maybe both, but the town square would be the optimum place, just because down on the riverfront side toward the playground area, if you remember, the activation plan had like an Instagram spot, you know, so to put that and make it, you know, use that historical Riverhead agricultural piece.
It goes forward.
And make it the Instagram spot, I think is a really nice idea, just to tie those, you know, the past and the, and the current together, but we're working on getting pricing, so that's, that's gonna be the trick there.
We also have to consider throwing possibles, if there is flooding and the mitigation of that.
Yes.
So that, that's the engineering component also. I think it's critical that we involve the engineering component, if it's gonna be downtown.
In that raised up space, a little bit higher, so I think we could find a spot for it that wouldn't be inundated and, you know, under normal circumstances anymore.
Silly question, does the clock actually keep time?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Then it's not a clock.
So how does every hour you move the daffodils around?
It's a clock, not a sundial.
I don't know anything about this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
All I know, planting is, is the easy part.
Yeah, right.
Putting the whole thing together, that's a whole.
I love the idea of a compass, if it was in the circle over there, but that's, you know, clock. I, I love the flowers, you know, it's just.
We'll call Rolex up and see if they can help us out.
Yeah, I'm sure they will.
I think the town square is better, I think that sometimes, sometimes with the traffic circle, there's always that five-foot radius where tractor trailers are going through, they cut into, they destroy the grass, they, they drive into it.
Once a year or so, we have a car that doesn't see the circle and goes right straight through it.
So that's, I'm afraid, you do something magnificent like that, and a car hits it.
Well, then.
We gotta have insurance.
I advise the town to take out the extra insurance.
Yes, we would have to, yeah. And then the insurance policy of the driver, if they have insurance, theoretically, would, would be tapped on for that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys taking the time.
So I, I need an answer, you know, from this town board or somebody that says.
Well, we want to move forward, we're gonna look for the funding.
Okay.
So we've got, we've got full support, it looks like, right?
Why do you need to know by?
Well, I gotta go to Europe and say to these growers, because it's not just one grower.
Right.
I gotta go and see ten, maybe fifteen growers and say, all right, we can do it, and, but they're gonna say, okay, well, where is your money? And unless I come up with something.
The check's in the mail? Well, they know you have plenty of money anyway, Jack.
Well, as long as you back me up, it's all right.
Just growers and negotiations aren't that way.
So the supervisor's gonna see where the funds are, and, you know, and hopefully soon, and.
I can make myself available to go to Holland with you to help load up stuff. Hey, you know, you hit us with enough money in that budget, we can all go together. Was there any other film, pictures?
There was some other mass plantings in close.
Here's the machine. Frank, I, I think you, you can drive that.
I can drive that.
Yeah, that's a little one.
Do you know how to work it?
Yeah, it's done by hand.
It's a machine that you just drill a hole.
Yep, for smaller areas, corners.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you for such great ideas. Awesome.
It'll need a new work.
No, this is for a far area network, and definitely it would be very well positioned, it's a grace, so it's not that you have to tilt and salt it, and then quickly have.
Is it okay that I go and see it in the walls?
Okay, yeah.
This is odd right back on.
Highway department control.
Yes, and I'm sure he, he'll support that, he's great in, like, along those regards.
If he finds out he has worked with me.
Okay, so I was gonna do that, I was gonna mention that, it's okay.
Well, look for you. Does Joanne have your number, her telephone number? You wanna get his number?
I have his history.
You do, okay, he has.
That's all right.
Yes.
Okay, what's next?
All right, everyone, moving along.
Are they here? Is DFT here?
Okay, moving along, we'll just have to take one more quick item, because he's gotta leave, and, um, okay, so moving along, we have matters surrounding the code enforcement for the town of Riverhead. The General Municipal Law Section eight oh six one A regarding counties, towns, villages, school districts, and fire district states that we, as government officials, must adopt a code of ethics, which at a minimum contains provisions in respect to disclosure of interests in legislation before a governing body, also holding the investments in conflict with other official duties, also private employment in conflict with official duties, also future employment, as well as other conflicts of interest. The town has not comprehensively reviewed its website concerning the code of ethics. The last time that any amendment was made was in July twenty-first, I believe it was twenty fifteen, and that was just in a little, a line that was put in. And I would like to recommend to the board to consider the Office of the New York State Controller Code of Ethics for local governments, which ensures that public, the public receives what it needs to function in a fair, unbiased manner. It also provides local administrations with administration guidelines to ensure the integrity in their operations, resulting in the fostering of trust from the community. The Office of New York State Controller has created a model code of ethics for local governments. It is a code beyond the New York State General Municipal Law, which is what we adopted. It provides local municipalities across all of New York State the opportunity to, to enhance the standards. These standards were created in April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Many towns are adopting it. Do you have copies of that, of the code of ethics? I'm gonna provide the board with the code of ethics for, from the Office of New York State Controller, and I'm hoping that I have your support to adopt this, this legislation. And I know I put the town attorney, we told him we're gonna have this discussion, and you wanna come up and discuss this? You don't wanna come up? No, no, Devin told you yesterday, so where's Devin? Why, why is this happening? We, Devin, what?
I got a, I got a call from Danny about thirty forty-five, suggesting that you wanted to move the ethics discussion that's on for the Zach.
Okay, hold on a second. Did you let him know that we had a discussion item on, on the, on the code, ethics code yesterday?
I said for, for ethics.
For ethics, okay, so you, you.
So I was supposed to interpret that to mean the ethics code?
Did you say ethics code?
I didn't know what it was, I just said ethics.
Oh, okay, but it was also on the agenda last night.
Yeah.
So you read the work session agenda, and in either case, it's no matter, here it is, um, do we have.
So I mean, usually you tell me if you wanna put something on and you want me to talk.
No, this is a discussion.
Okay.
And it's up for discussion. Yeah, so it, it wasn't a matter, the supervisor and, you know, as people put up stuff for discussions, um, so.
Nice to have stuff ahead of time, though, so we know what we're gonna be discussing.
A lot to review.
It is, this is a discussion.
I also, I also didn't.
We're not making a decision.
I also didn't get this beforehand, so I have no notes on it, I haven't reviewed it with the ethics board.
But you're the ethics attorney, right?
I am the, I am, I am the counsel who gives legal advice to the board, to the Board of Ethics.
Right, you're the liaison for the supervisor.
No, 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 I'm the, I'm counsel to the Board of Ethics in-house, except when there is a matter relating to a town board member or other elected official, then I recommend on behalf of the Ethics Board that it be referred to an outside attorney.
Right, so, so we brought this up as a discussion, I called Debbie before the meeting, and I thought, maybe I should have the code of ethics for you. Just like a lot of people, when they come forward, they'll add, they'll add an addition, right, and they'll say, I have a printout. So I just decided to provide this to you, I would've still had the conversation, okay? I didn't expect you to make a decision and whatever.
Well, it's not my decision to make.
Well, it's a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I'm gonna ask the board to consider it, now they have copies, so they don't have to go out and get it. I, again, this was, I asked to print it, to bring it forward to this board, but at least they have it, and they can walk away and say, let's digest this.
So what I'm looking at is frequently asked questions, this is not the actual model.
Okay, we'll get you the code, these are, okay, that's what we printed this morning, because it was a last-minute thing to try to educate you.
Yeah, this is frequently asked.
So, um, so anyway, frequently asked question, not a bad item to help you educate yourselves, and so we, again, it's something for the, for the, for the board considered. I think that the, the code of ethics has to be revamped, it is very archaic, and, you know, something for the board to consider, that's it.
All right, so I have them, I have our code of ethics here. What specifically do you think is missing, or what do you think needs to be revised?
I want you to be the attorney, to tell me, to help us.
You're presenting it, saying that it needs to be revised.
We're all gonna work together.
So I'm wondering, I'm wondering what's missing.
Yeah, well, come on, we're all gonna work together, the board is gonna have recommendations.
Well, it doesn't seem like we are right now, but that's okay.
Isn't this a work session?
And it can be much more specific, you supervisor, can you, can you talk about what suggested changes that you wanna make?
Okay, well, I guess I will. For example, I got in department mail not too long ago, and I had to fish out how it got to me, it was through inter-office mail that we got a, a recommendation from the, the Ethics Committee for our code change, and I didn't know how I got that, and I had to fish it out, and then we checked to see how the board members got it, because they shook at it, and then it was determined that they did get it, so they had made a recommendation.
Right, it was delivered, it was delivered.
To you, yeah.
Well, it was, it was generated by the Board of Ethics and then distributed.
Delivered to you, and then it was put in the mail.
The Board of Ethics made a determination on a pending complaint, as they typically do, and when that determination is finalized, the Chair of the Ethics Board comes in and signs it, and then I make copies and I distribute it to anyone that it's supposed to be distributed to.
So this was a confidential email, excuse me, letter, it said privileged and confidential, and it was, the board was asking us to consider making this modification.
Right.
Okay, that wasn't the initial complaint, this was a recommendation.
These are the recommendations that came after.
Yes, that came after, so that, again, you asked me.
So it was delivered in the manner that is the same as the, as a recommendations following the investigation of a complaint.
Okay, so, so you asked me what, consider, we need your input, we need everybody's input, everybody should add to this, to say, how are we gonna change our code? Well, it, it, nothing's happened since the last thing was an inclusion in, in twenty seventeen, there's a possibility that we can adopt this, this is out there, and we have to, we need to explore it.
All right, so if I remember correctly, the recommendations were suggested to the Board of Ethics by outside counsel that assisted them on a prior investigation.
I'd love to do with that. I, I spoke to, I spoke to the person who had inked the letter, which is the Chairwoman, and she told me that that was a, strictly, I only spoke to her once, because I was trying to find out how the letter got delivered, because it came in the mail, in an inter-office mail, and I called her up.
Delivery to all five council people, yes.
Yeah, so I, I asked her, how did this, did you drop it off? Did anybody get it? I didn't know anything about it, and she told me that it was a recommendation to the code of ethics that the committee made. So again, that's something for us to consider.
Of their outside counsel on the prior complaint.
Well, I, I could release the letter, because anytime you do a code change, it's nothing confidential, so I'll get a copy of the letter, or, and we can, we can, you know.
There's, it's, it's correspondence from the Board of Ethics to the Town Board recommending a particular code change based on experiences that they've had.
Their, the entire board recommended, made this recommendation.
Correct.
So that was in January, and, you know, nothing has happened, so I decided, let's just sit down and work. I don't think it should be a back and forth with you as the attorney.
If we wanna make that code amendment, I could have prepared and proposed code amendment.
But you're the, you're the liaison and the attorney and the counsel to them, when you make that recommendation, and now I bring it up, and it becomes like there's a conflict. That was back in January when that, when that letter was, was put into the, into the mail.
Right, so they made recommendations, conveyed those recommendations to the Town Board, all right?
I don't think anybody gave you a directive to draw up a code draft or anything, I think that's where we're.
Yeah, I read those, and I was in, you know, I, I saw those, but it's up to us to decide whether we wanna adopt this or not.
That's why we're here, nothing was done, and we're here, yeah, so we're here to discuss it, to see what, what we wanna do.
But why didn't bring the letter with me, because I wasn't aware that that's what we're talking about.
We needed to be a little better prepared for this to be dropped in our lap today to have a meaningful discussion.
I was told we didn't have to act on it, if we didn't want to, right?
Nobody knows.
You don't have to act on it, if we didn't want to.
So, so, so the Board of Ethics makes recommendations to use the Town Board, the same as any other town hall or committee. It is then within your purview to take action on that. If you wanna take action on this potential code amendment, I'd be happy to draft it, but.
So what you're saying is that a board member should have, even though you're the attorney and the code, a Board of Ethics counsel, that you don't, you stop. If there's something comes up, you don't make a recommendation, somebody from the board has to go forward to make the recommendation, well, that's the time now, I'm making a recommendation.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
But if we operate like that in that vacuum, we, we can't move forward, Eric.
Okay, so there have been many instances over the past year or so that I have done things without a specific directive, though I thought they were important to do, and I've been told not to do that, so.
That's true.
I'm getting a little bit inconsistent.
I think he needs to know whether if somebody's supportive, you need to have a discussion on what the recommendations are, if we're in support of, and then he's only so many hours in the day, Attorney's Office is doing incredible work, but I just think if, if it's a directive that you want, and you want to discuss the particular change, then we should discuss.
That's how it should've been put on, that's how it should've been presented, so we know what you're trying to do.
I would've liked to have seen the actual current regulations and what the proposed change is.
It should've been brought up.
This is a discussion, do you wanna, discussion is when people come here and give us handouts, and they, just like earlier?
Yeah, I'm discussing and telling you, you poorly did this, that's what I'm discussing right now.
I know that, anything I do ever since I got in office, you say that, so stop, okay? Let, let's, let's deal with the topic at hand.
What I can say is, is if you want me to make a proposed code change based on that letter and put it on for next week's work session, it'll be ready.
This is a discussion, so we, how many times do people come back for further discussion? Perfect, but we should also look at this, we'll get your copies of it, and we can, we don't have to put it next week, we can wait a week or two for the board to digest it, but, you know, we should, I'm asking the board, as people have brought up discussion items, I'm asking the board to support me, and so it should not be going back and forth, especially on an ethics issue, you know, enhancing our ethics code.
In my mind, I mean, though I hadn't been asked an opinion on the Board of Ethics recommendations.
I did send Bob Kern to speak to you about it, and you, he reported back to me that you didn't think it. that you didn't think it was necessary.
Yeah.
Okay, that happened.
Necessary for us to act. That's right.
Right, so the Board of Ethics makes recommendations to the Town Board. That is not compulsory on you. You decide if that's what you want to do. And I would have also told Bob that if he wants to, you know, if, if you want to move forward with that type of amendment, let me know. I can draft the amendment. I can ask another attorney in the office to draft the amendment.
Okay, it's a discussion and, um, I think that we have to take whatever's going on here. There's some personal feelings here on two accounts. We have to move that away. We as a board have the, the responsibility to ensure that the public has trust in us. There's been, um, numerous inquiries as to our ethics code. I looked at other towns' ethics code. I did a little bit of work on it. Um, when that, when that recommendation came in, which I will make, I've located. Or, or if you can, if somebody inquires, I'll have them. Um, you, you can, uh, give it to them. Uh, make that recommendation and the possibility of, of taking the controller's, um, uh, model code of ethics. And if the board decides not to go with it, then I'm the only one to try to do it.
Okay, so I just, I just want to be clear on something. The recommendations that were in the letter may or may not be consistent. I mean, it seems like you're talking about two different amendments. You're either talking about adopting the Comptroller's Model Rules or an amendment to our code based on the Board of Ethics recommendations.
Okay, so.
Or both.
When, when I started the conversation, I started it on this. And then you questioned me, well, what are you talking about? What, what should I put in it? Hold on, let me finish. Hold on. Don't play lawyer here against a, a Town Board member.
That's your job.
Play grocery clerk. He is the town attorney. Jesus.
So, uh, so, so after that, you, you questioned me as to me having the full expertise and what is it that I want? And I just happened to bring that up. So because you questioned it to that point, then we should, we should, we should also consider both, both issues at hand.
All right, right, so first, I didn't question your expertise. Second, the only problem that I'm having with this is that I was unprepared to be responsive to what you wanted to talk about.
We, this is introduction to a topic. It's called a discussion. It, it's not, we have it all together. We need to move on this. We gotta have the public have faith in us and understand that we are on top of this just as every other town is constantly updating their, their Code of Ethics. It was brought up to me that we haven't done until 2015 and that's what started it.
So why don't we plan this for next Thursday's work session? So we all have time to read this and be prepared for it.
That's the way that it should be going and that's where the work session is.
And have an educated discussion.
Right, it was, I didn't want you to act. We wanted us to sit down and anybody has any ideas.
Something when I got up here.
I think we're just, we're sitting down. We don't have the Code of Ethics. We don't have the recommendations in front of us. And I'm not sure what suggestions you're making, so I'm not, I'm not trying to work through it.
The town attorney who's the ethics, maybe get the, the law to you now that we, we're having that discussion. Uh, you expect me to do all the legal stuff? You know, that's just.
No, I'm asking what, what.
You said that.
You want to change town code. Tell us what you want to change.
We're not ready to change the town code. We're having a discussion before we decide to possibly change the town code. Okay, just like the last discussion, there was an idea and now we're gonna try to find the fundings and then it comes before the board. Well, you don't have to expect me to have the entire law and give you everything and stand out here by myself as a supervisor of the town of Riverhead and have to fight for us to have a discussion on town, on, on, on this.
Missing the entire point, Madam Supervisor. You're missing the entire point. Schedule this for next Thursday's work session so everybody here knows what's gonna be discussed. We can all educate ourselves and have an educated discussion as a board, as we should.
And exactly.
This was just plopped on our lap today with nobody being told about what it was about or anything else. So what do you expect to have today? That's why we asked, what is it you're looking to do with this?
Whatever you guys want, whatever the board wants.
We just got it. So I'm talking. Thank you. We just got this today. How can you expect us to have a discussion on it? We don't even know what's in it. This should have been put up very differently. That's all I'm suggesting. Put it up on next Thursday's work session so everybody can be prepared, prepared to have a discussion.
This is not over. This is an introduction to the topic with a possible understanding of what it is for you guys to consider. The town attorney will get you the, the law and we either put it up next week or the following week.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So we have it prepared and we can sit down and do it.
Functionally, how this, you know, should probably work is you have a Board of Ethics. If the Town Board has an interest in fielding recommendations from your Board of Ethics as to, you know, the sufficiency of our current code, that's something that, you know, you would typically refer to that board and then they would report back.
Why don't you bring them in?
Why don't we have them come in?
Okay.
That would be ideal.
Let them come in and discuss the changes. I think it's a clearer discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, so again, at least we have something productive from this meeting except, except everybody pointing fingers at the supervisor because she, she's, she's toying with the idea of possibly, uh, 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 taking a code and, and having a discussion. And so at least we got something positive that you're gonna send a possible, uh, adoption for the Model Code of Ethics. And then you're gonna contact, you're gonna contact the committee and ask them to come in. And also what came out of that, after you questioned me about, well, what is it that you want? Because I need point, um, you know, it came out that they had recently made a, a recommendation to the entire board in January and nothing, nobody moved it forward. So now I'm saying, I'm gonna suggest that, you know, I move it forward. But again, all of this has to be, all of this has to be discussed. And we have to have a, we have to have a public hearing. The public, right, because we're changing code. So again, just like when people bring ideas to work session, then, then, and, and they develop and then we can, we can enhance it and we can bring this to, you know, a full. Um, if, if I'm being accused of just hitting you with something at a discussion.
In, at, at a fairness, you know, the work session agenda is typically crafted, you know, over the course of the week. And I'm usually, you know, aware of everything that I'm going to be expected to come in and talk about so that I can be adequately prepared. This is something that I got a phone call about at, you know, three forty-five, three, maybe three thirty yesterday, uh, when I was out of the office, suggesting that what was going to be on an open session was a carryover from what we were going to discuss in executive session. So what I would say is, you know, I don't feel like I got appropriate notice to come in and, you know, talk about this specifically.
To consider this, to get it to the board and to go reach out to the committee, which is great. We did make progress now. It happened at the end.
What I'll do is.
And go back to the board. And when they can make it, and that was at, 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 um, Hobbit's, uh, request, it doesn't have to be done next week. This is a work in progress. And then we'll bring it back and hopefully everybody will have ideas. And if, if three people don't want to move forward, then it's a viewpoint.
Well, so, so what I'll, what I'll do is the Board of Ethics meets on the second Tuesday of each month, um, at their next meeting, the April meeting, uh, we'll bring this up and we will start reviewing section by section, the town code, and look at the State Comptroller's Model Code and see where there's consistency, where there's differences, if there's a, you know, a desire on their part to recommend any amendments. And then at some point, you know, maybe towards the end of April or the beginning of May, like they and/or I can report back.
Okay, now you're carrying, now carrying out exactly what this, this discussion was supposed to be. It took a, a long time to get to this point, but I totally agree and I thank you for moving that forward.
Can I say one thing? Because when I did go back, when I, that, when the, uh, Board of Ethics made that recommendation and I came to you and said, what is, you know, what do we do with this? You said, you guys can either adopt this or not.
Right.
Right, so, so even though they make the recommendation, it's up to us.
I actually asked you as a board member and, and you reported back that, back that, um, the town attorney's office did not believe that you have to implement this.
Yeah, it's up to, it's up to the board.
It's not, it's not compulsory.
Okay, so let's just, you know, I hate the pointing fingers and everybody back and forth. I, I think the end, the very end of this discussion was very productive and that was the purpose of it. Everybody got heated and agitated. Nobody, this does not happen when you're dealing with, uh, you know what the public looks at, at us now after having this discussion back and forth? I mean, you don't look that great, but in either case, we're gonna move forward and I thank you and I, I, I'd like your ideas of how to move this forward. There is an, an emergency on this, um, and we can, um, you know, we gotta do this right. Uh, we should be comprehensive about it and, um, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt, you've been waiting so patiently. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's, uh. We have a consultant that's been waiting patiently.
Yeah, so you're next. And I know, um, he was gonna, that this one's gonna be a while. What time do you have to leave, Matt?
I'm gonna leave in like twenty-two minutes.
Well, to the extent that the board wants Sarah to go through her, her findings, it's really up to you guys. It's available. You read it. Yes, the Zoom, please, which Sarah, she's been, she's been here.
Yeah, I went through it and read it. I, I was very satisfied with her findings. I don't need to hear it repeated.
Okay, so you're good?
Can I make sure that this is available on, is it online?
It's online now when it's reviewing. I can give you everyone like a summary where we're at now.
Can I introduce the topic first for the public?
You want to summarize it for everybody?
Thank you. Okay, so now, um, we had, have Matt once again. Thank you for being patient. Um, I'm pleased to have Sarah Yakel from BFJ, uh, excuse me?
Check, do an audio check.
Oh, she's doing an audio check. Okay. Wait, let me just read this. We have Sarah Yakel from BFJ joining us today by Zoom to discuss in-depth matters surrounding battery energy storage. Matt, um, did you want to further introduce the topic?
Yeah, I can give everyone, the board and the public, just a little bit of an information session on this. I know we've been working on this for quite some time. It's been like a good part of my life for the best, at least for my life, twelve months, and I know for a code revision in Council with Rothwell, two years. Um, the first time we talked about this was, you know, for me, was April twenty-fourth last year. We brought the work session. It's been through code revision. There have been two public hearings on this local law, uh, in August and December. So right now we're in the secret review process on this. Um, if the public's not familiar, this is battery energy storage systems. Uh, we have a draft local law which largely deals with grid level storage, which are tier-two systems. So that's anything over six hundred kilowatt hours. It also references tier-one systems, which are under six hundred kilowatt hours. Uh, a tier-one system is something you would install on your house or your business to store energy from the grid. Tier-two, like I said, larger grid storage systems where you're having your battery stacks. They're purchasing energy from the grid and storing them in these, in the batteries and then the owner of these sites sells it back. Uh, they can help with black starts. Uh, for the most part, a lot of this law deals with safety and fire suppression. Uh, I know there's a lot of public concern out there with the state of batteries. It's largely to do with consumer batteries, which are different than the batteries that are in these systems. Uh, I want to make that point clear. Um, consumer batteries don't go through the rigorous testing that a battery energy storage system has to go per the Uniform Code, which is in this, um.
When you say consumer, so the public knows, Matt.
Scooters, the things that are being charged with the wrong chargers, e-bikes, golf carts.
But, but with that, I mean, the companies that make these, make the original parts, they're made, it's the aftermarket parts that are the problem.
Yep.
Okay, and that to me, the Bureau of Standards has lacked in their, in their duties and the state's lacking in theirs. But anyway.
Yeah.
It's very clear, you have to make it really clear to the public that with those electric scooters, it's the aftermarket, cheap batteries, cheap chargers.
Which the batteries that we're looking at in terms of this code are different and differently regulated. That's really, for me, I, you can ask, you know, we retained BFJ in January this year to complete our secret review on this. It's a type-one action. So Sarah has completed the part two for us, part three, and a supplement to part three, which explains all her findings, which the board has seen. It's publicly available. Um, I can ask Sarah to introduce herself, uh, speak to her qualifications and then give, I mean, if she wants to give a brief summary to what we're talking about. It's up to the board.
I think that would be important for her to summarize.
I think it'd be very, very, because this is a topic that.
It's heavy. It's a lot of.
A lot of people have a lot of interest in and I think the more information that's put out there.
Yeah.
Um, it's the right thing to do, especially.
All right, good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good, uh, good afternoon, Madam Supervisor, members of the Town Council. My name is Sarah Yakel. I'm a principal with BFJ Planning. Been with the firm about seventeen years and the last ten of those in a principal capacity. Um, I have about, in total, about twenty-three years of experience in environmental review. First several years of my career were in California, but the, the last twenty or so have been in New York. Uh, and I run our firm's environmental review division. I think I have seen most of you, uh, previously, uh, talking about Seeker on the comp plan after we interviewed. So it's nice to see all of you again. As Matt indicated, we were retained back in January to look specifically at battery storage. Um, as Matt said, the, uh, local law that you have before you is a type-one action under Seeker. Is it, is a new use that would apply to more than twenty-five acres. That's what classifies it as a type-one action. And what you do have before you is the EAF. I think previously you had received the EAF Part One back when you coordinated lead agency and circulated that Part One for comment to the other involved agencies. And now before you, you have the Part Two EAF, which is a state form. It goes through eighteen different, uh, potential impact categories that are identified by the state. Um, and has a list of questions under each, uh, impact category about whether impacts are, you know, there are no impacts or small impacts or large to moderate. Based on that Part Two, anything that, typically anything that gets selected as large to moderate gets, uh, additional detail in a EAF Part Three supplement. Um, we took a very conservative approach here and that anything that we identified or answered yes to at all, um, whether that be no impact or small impact, given the, um, public concern about the project, we wanted to be very conservative in our approach and provide a narrative description of why those impacts didn't in, in fact have, um, you know, the potential for being significant. And so that's the document that you have before you. Also included there is the EAF Part Three Form, which again is provided by the state. And that is the document that is your, uh, determination of significance, which means your negative declaration, which, uh, in this case would state that Seeker is over or if there was to be a positive declaration, that would indicate that Seeker is continuing. Based on the answers in the Part Two, which we can talk about in a moment, um, we have determined that, you know, the right course of action here is a negative declaration, which is all outlined in the document that you have. Uh, and I just want to sort of preface the work that we did and just say that the proposed action that's been contemplated in the full EAF, uh, is generic or legislative in nature. It is a local law. It is an actual approval of any future development. And it will not directly result in the construction of any battery energy storage system. Uh, the proposed action, as I said, is a local law that sets forth how the town will regulate and permit vests in the future, uh, in line with state and local sustainability goals. So, you know, this is really just setting the parameters, um, that Matt's outlined to you previously that are in the law. Um, this is based on the NICEERTA Model Code. Um, it, it started with that as its foundation and then through the work that Matt did in the planning department, has actually made the law quite a bit more stringent than the, uh, NICEERTA's Model Code. Has put in a, a, quite a few different, additional protections for the town, um, and so has made it more restrictive. And so when an action is generic, as it is in this case, the determination of significance must consider consequences of such action on the environment, but it is not necessary to speculate about potential future projects. Some of the concerns we've heard from the public are, well, what about this? And, you know, future, sort of speculating about what could happen. And Seeker doesn't really, it doesn't require you to speculate, doesn't really allow for speculation. We don't know at this stage how many facilities you may get, where exactly they may go. But what we can analyze is the parameters of those facilities and what impacts may result in the, in the future. But the most important thing here to keep in mind is that any future project that's coming in, uh, for a tier-two facility would be required to receive a special permit from your, uh, board as well as site plan approval from the planning board. And as part of those, both of those procedures, discretionary actions, um, they would be required to comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So this is not supposed to be the State Environmental Quality Review Act process on all those future individual projects. We are looking at sort of the order of magnitude impacts that could occur from the local law. Um, and so in, in preparing this, I think it's important to note that I did reach out. Um, well, first I did a, a quick search just to see, I have, I have worked on one other, uh, local law for battery storage and in that case, the analysis was, you know, very, it was sort of wrapped in with solar and, and the analysis was very minimal. Uh, we didn't take this, this conservative approach that we took here. And, um, you know, I just did a quick search in the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Environmental Notice Bulletin, which if you're not familiar with this publication, it, um, lists all the EISs that are happening in the state, pos-dec, positive declarations and negative declarations. And I searched through it just to see if there had been a generic EIS done on a best law anywhere in the state. And I just wanted to point out that there has not been that kind of review on any of these laws because there's sort of an assumption that they are overall low impact. They do have some risk and we can talk about that risk, but in general, they do not generate traffic. They are not, you know, high demand for water sewer, uh, the, the sort of cat. They are not, you know, high demand for water sewer, the sort of catastrophic risk aside, which we can talk about in a moment. They don't generate schoolchildren, you know. As far as a use in the town, they are relatively low impact. And then, following up on that to get a little bit more information and a better understanding of the risk, I did speak with Bill Overkirk from NYSERTA and had a conversation with him about all of the protections that are built into the fire code, the Uniform Fire Code, to get a better understanding of that, the fire code, the sort of history that it was adopted statewide and strengthened into 2020, following some of the, you know, there was the big fire that a lot of people referenced in Arizona in 2018. This New York State law was really, you know, advanced to be probably one of the strictest, if not the strictest, fire code protection in the country. And so I think in terms of how these are regulated for safety, the state has done a very good job, you know, with the information that we currently have. So from there, I, if I can, if you want, I can kind of go through all the various sections of the report and talk about them briefly.
I don't, I don't think that's necessary, but I would like to just ask a quick question on, on number 16, impact on human health, because that seems to be the one that sort of is confusing to me. The general question or the general purpose of this is the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. And then you checked yes, though through all of the A through L, the impacts were no, small, or may not occur at all. And I just wanted a qualifier on M, which is other impacts. The proposed action may pose a fire safety hazard. Is that why that was checked yes?
Correct. So what we did, and as I said at the beginning, we did take a very conservative approach to this report. And so there are, there is no instance in the form where we actually checked large to moderate impact for anything.
Right, that's what I saw.
Everything is small, and so typically, and I think this is what you may be more used to, is if you have a Part II form on a local law, those probably are all checked no, because the local law itself doesn't result in development. We took a very conservative approach and sort of projected, well, if it did, what might some of the issues be? And that was a, we checked yes there. We are not under any, from a CECL perspective, any requirement to provide additional analysis there, but we went ahead and did that so that the public could have some comfort.
Excellent. I just didn't understand why the contradiction, or seemingly. Thank you.
Yep.
Can I just ask, so the work that you did, so some question why, why it's done in advance? Or we want to make sure that it's part of our overall comprehensive plan? So that's specifically why we put the work into your hands, because your company's doing the entire new comprehensive plan. So I just wanted, if you can talk about, so how you take your findings, and then how do you present them to become part in the future of the comprehensive plan? So how do we get from here to there?
A couple things on the comprehensive plan. One of the questions, and I believe it's a little, let's see, I don't have it off the top of my head. One of the questions later in the report, oh, question 12, consistency with community plans. There is a requirement that this local law, as with all your local laws, be consistent with your comprehensive plan. We took the approach because we only have your existing comprehensive plan. That's what's currently adopted. So we reviewed it against that document. Obviously, this technology didn't really exist in 2003, or at least not in a way that people were using it. But in general, the policy language in your existing comprehensive plan is certainly supportive of this type of technology and advancements. It says, you know, to, let me pull it up here for myself, so I don't misquote. You know, it says, the vision statement is that, let's see, you know, that the utility infrastructure is critical to the health, safety, and welfare of a community. Water, sewer, electric, natural gas, and telecommunications facilities are relied upon by residents for day-to-day activity and contribute to the town's economic well-being. And utilities should continue to be expanded to meet Riverhead's growing needs. And so this is certainly a technology that will help the town better do that. And so, you know, this law is certainly consistent with the comprehensive plan that you have, as well as the state goals. With respect to the future work that we are currently doing, this certainly needs to be part of that. We are looking at, as I understand it, solar and other things, and looking at potential revisions or amendments to the underlying industrial zones. And that may have an impact on how this law ultimately is adopted. If there are changes in those underlying zones, it may affect this as well. But those will certainly be integrated as we're drafting those and we'll face community input. And this is part of a much larger, I think, sustainability effort that will be included in the comprehensive plan. Battery storage is one thing, you know, one tool in that sustainability, sort of, you know, alternative energy model that will be ultimately a part of the comprehensive plan.
Anyone from the board have any questions?
On impact of land under Section 1, 1A, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth of water table is less than three feet. I know there's been some discussion from the public regarding underwater ground areas that this could possibly impact. You've got that listed as no or, no or small impact may occur. If there were a fire and/or a meltdown of one of these facilities, how can you say that that wouldn't be an impact on groundwater that's only three feet underneath where these things are built?
So that is included. The answer, there's a whole discussion of that under, I think it's item two, actually, the impact of groundwater in the narrative, where we talk specifically about Suffolk County Designated Special Groundwater Protection Area. As you know, that does cover, I think it's about 85% of the town, including, you know, a lot of your existing agricultural uses, your other existing industrial facilities. And so this is something that you are looking at and dealing with on all of your projects. Now, there's a distinction here to be made, that the best facility itself does not require any use of water in its day-to-day operation. That's not to say if there was a fire, you wouldn't need it for that. And so we did look at the potential impact that could happen from a fire. And, you know, based on the sort of the provisions that are in the code that's proposed, and all of the various fire protections in the Uniform Fire Code, we felt, you know, some comfort level that a fire could be managed. Obviously, once you have a site-specific project, that project has to be evaluated in terms of what is its actual location? Is it three feet from the water table? And if so, is it appropriate location for that type of use? We haven't made that determination here. That has to happen at a site-specific level, and it has to happen based on the size of the facility, the location of the facility, the amount of water that's available. You know, if it's a really big facility, it may need a lot more water to put out that fire. And those are all things that have to be analyzed as part of that special permit and site plan review process, that we really can't answer those right now. It's purely speculation. What we can answer is to say, we are comfortable and feel that there are enough assurances in the Uniform Code and in your legislation, and after talking to NYSERTA, that these do not pose any more risk than other industrial uses, and in fact, may have less risk because they are so heavily regulated. We also encourage in the law, you know, it's in the local law that you coordinate with your fire marshal, with your local fire district. And one thing I could also add is that during, I think the biggest concern with these, right, is obviously this fire risk. And you may feel like your local professionals may not have the awareness of these facilities to be able to, you know, weigh in during that special permit, site plan approval. One of the communities I'm working in that has a best application for them is actually hired, at the applicant's expense, a specialty fire consultant to review this and have those assurances. And so there are ways, once you know how much water they may need, to sort of mitigate or include those conditions in the site plan or special permit for underground water retention or an onsite storage tank, so that those fire and water concerns can be adequately addressed.
I think also, if I'm correct, maybe wrong, but in the site planning process, we can make requirements towards like water capturing.
Absolutely.
So that
A liner or a retention tank.
Putting water on it, where capturing that water, that that water's not necessarily running off the battery into the ground.
Exactly. And there may be, you know, locations that just are not appropriate. That will be determined as part of those site-specific reviews. There's also in the law quite a few provisions for, you know, environmentally sensitive areas, for ag lands and other things that need, you know, additional, or either they're not allowed in those areas, wetlands and other things, or they need additional analysis to justify that those locations are appropriate.
Sarah, some people in the community are adamant that this needs to be addressed during the comprehensive plan. We asked you to look at this early on in the process. What is, if you could explain to the public, what is the difference between what you've done now, and you kind of touched on this, but what you've done now versus what would be in the final comprehensive plan once it's completed? Is there a big variance between what's gonna happen from now on after what you've done? Or is this fairly comfortable, are you fairly comfortable saying this is what will be in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, I mean, if we were doing this as part of the comprehensive plan, I could envision a recommendation. If you weren't doing this now, what I would envision in the comprehensive plan would have been a recommendation to adopt the NYSERTA local law. And so the nature of comprehensive plans is not, you know, it's policy language. It doesn't have all the site-specific analysis in there either. Yes, it's in our scope of work to do a generic environmental impact statement on the comprehensive plan. You know, it's not unusual to not do that. Typically, comprehensive plans, what are, what's in them is generally supportive of the environment, but here, you know, we understand that this is the approach that the town wants to take for extra protections. But the analysis that would be in that document for these facilities, in fact, would probably be a little bit less, because it would be competing with all the other recommendations. And so, you know, by doing it in advance, it's getting a little bit more, probably quite a bit more attention and scrutiny than it might have otherwise if it was part of the comprehensive plan.
Sarah, you mentioned that you may make a recommendation to support the state battery energy storage concept. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but are there towns in Long Island or near us adopting this? Where do we stand on that?
I can speak to that directly, yeah. So Southampton has already adopted a similar code. Islip has already adopted a similar code. I believe Brookhaven has adopted a similar code.
Okay, so it's in our eastern towns, okay?
Yeah, it's not something that's new. Southampton's, I believe, was adopted in 2021, and they're reviewing applications now, which is a very similar code to the code that we use. It's built on a NYSERTA code with similar
Right, they're all, they're all very similar.
In East Hampton has them.
There seems to be a fear in this, right?
And it's not undue
You know where I'm going with that?
It's not undue concern.
Is that because it was new at one time, and maybe it had to be?
Yeah, it's a new, I think, it's hard to interrupt you, Matt. I think it's a, you know, it's a new technology.
Correct, okay.
There have been a lot of high-profile fires. As Matt pointed out in his intro, those tend to be, or almost exclusively, are a different type of battery than this. These are this, you know, there was the fire at the daycare facility. That was a scooter that was plugged in, being charged in the wrong kind of outlet. You know, there was the Tesla car fire recently. You know, that was, just, that was a horrible car accident. You know, it's a very different type of, and it's not, and they're not, in a car, they're not regulated in the same way that they are when they're stationary through these battery energy storage systems. You know, there are concerns about batteries. I think there are less concerns about these facilities because of how heavily regulated they are, but there's a lot of sort of either confusion, misunderstanding, and concern, because they are new. And when there's an issue, it's significant. I did, in my conversation with Bill Overkirk from NYSERTA, you know, I was asking him if there was any sort of information about relative risk. He said they're actually producing a white paper that should be out later this month, I guess it would be April now, that has some of those statistics that show how safe they are relative to other uses. I am very anxious to see that. And, you know, if I see it before you do, I will share it. He did point out that in New York City, there has not to date been a single best fire. And they keep very strict, you know, very good records on those things. And in fact, they are proposing them and approving them on rooftops throughout the city. And so I think if there was a real, and the New York City fire code is even more strict than the state. So if there was a concern, I think they wouldn't be doing that.
Yeah, if I could add to that, I don't think there's any reason to not be concerned that there could be a catastrophe or something at this facility, but we want to ensure that our legislation covers us in that regard.
Right.
We can mitigate any concerns, which I believe that it does.
Now, do we have to change any fire codes?
No, not that I know of.
At all?
It's in the, it's in the New York State Fire Code.
Because she mentioned something about New York City fire.
So in terms of the city, it's more strict than the state code, but battery energy storage has its own section in New York State Fire Code in the Uniform Code.
Yeah, they added it as its own section in 2020.
Which, you know, Craig has reviewed this code. He gave us comments early on. So any facility that they propose will have to comply with that code if the legislation's about it.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Does the board have any questions?
If you have any additional questions, let me know.
I think the most common thing was that when we're doing site planning, we need to keep in mind mitigation of water and, you know, for fire and things like that.
Absolutely.
That's what makes Long Island different than the rest of the state of New York, is our aquifers and what we can to protect them.
Absolutely, and I think, given the way that the code is written, that those assurances and those reviews will happen.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Take care.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you, Matt.
Take care.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Matt, because a lot of the work you did made Sarah's job a little easier and
Absolutely.
They, you know, they appreciate it too, as we do. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. In terms of next steps, whenever the board directs me, we, you know, resolutions can be prepared for adoption as you guys see fit.
The board want to move it forward?
Sure. Yeah.
Yes.
And just in terms of next steps, will you all, should I plan to attend on Tuesday?
Or whenever it's gonna be on. Do you need Sarah?
Or yeah.
It's up to you guys.
We could decide that.
You can decide later.
Yeah, let's just get the resolution in, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Was this a new topic for you? Because you did a great job.
Batteries were new to me, yeah, for sure.
And I was hoping I heard that, because I said, wow, you took something that was foreign, literally. And then you just had to go there and get the law and just, you know, stake. I know about research sometimes.
It can be a little daunting, but that's sort of my
It is daunting.
My favorite area.
Oh, is it? Okay. So you pretty much did a good job, so.
Sometimes it's tough.
Devin, what do we have next?
We've been at this for two years.
Yeah, no rec?
It's just not a rush.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for me?
Good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Matt.
All right.
Appreciate it.
So next on our agenda was the rec department. Apparently, they canceled us out. I guess we're going too long for them. So we're gonna update the agenda and take that off. All right. And now, at the moment, I think we're gonna read the resolutions. Don't think there's that many of them today.
Once again, Devin, thank you for the bagels.
You are so welcome.
But what do you have for lunch?
Getting grumpy up there, not, not having anything in your stomachs, so.
Thank you, Devin.
Okay.
Okay, Devin.
All right, resolution number one, amends bid award for sewer chemicals. Number two, awards bid for food and meat products. Number three, adopts a local law amending Chapter 297 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Zero Tolerance Zones. Number four, adopts a local law amending Chapter 247 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Loitering. Number five, adopts a local law amending Chapter 205 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Alcoholic Beverages. Number six, approves non-pro-tongue license agreement with Suffolk County Council of Boy Scouts of America to utilize runway at Epcot. Number seven, Water District Capital Project Number 82305, 809 West Main Street, budget adoption. Number eight, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for 2023 concessions vendors, parks, and beaches.
Just want to mention, we, through the Beach Committee, we've had concerns that every year, somebody wins a bid for the beaches, and then they don't show up. So we asked Ray to kind of tweak that a little bit and see what he could do to make sure that they actually show up at the beaches to serve the people that are there. South Jamesboro, in particular, was one where they were supposed to come every day, and they just, they didn't do it. Understand, sort of, if it's a rainy day or, you know, something like that, but, you know, with no concession stands at our beaches, it's kind of important that these people, if they're gonna bid on it, they should show up.
Now, is the Jamesport, so they haven't, when was the last time that they had any type of concession stand?
That building is there, but that
Yeah, they haven't had that in years.
No, it's been a few years before they actually had somebody in. I think even the rec department ran it for a little bit. I know they've also reached out to vendors to see if somebody would want to come in and take it over. And I just don't think it's profitable enough to be something where somebody's gonna bid on it, go in and do the work on it that it needs to have done to, you know, it wouldn't be worth their while. So that's why we So that's why we offered to have the food trucks come down, but we just ask that they stick to their bid, if they're going to bid for it, that they actually do it.
Sure. Okay, resolution number nine, amends resolution 2023-2020-221. Number 10, appoints a public safety dispatcher one. Number 11, authorizes the supervisor to execute a license agreement with Celtic Quest, Inc. Number 12, appoints part-time traffic and control specialists, same for 13 and 14. Number 15, appoints hearing officer and authorizes suspension of employee. Number 16, ratifies execution of MOA between the Town of Riverhead and the Civil Service Employees Association, Inc., Local 1000, AFLCIO, Riverhead Unit of the Suffolk Local 852. Number 17, ratifies execution of a license agreement with Research Foundation of State University of New York for installation of fish passage camera at Granja Bell Park. Number 18, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post a notice to bidders for annual procurement contract. Number 19, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post a notice to bidders for annual construction contract. Number 20, awards bid for police uniform items. Number 21, extends bid for dry hydrated lime calcium hydroxide. Number 22, approves special event chapter 255 application for Riverhead Country Fair. Number 23, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for residential solid waste collection and disposal service for the Riverhead Refuse and Garbage District. Number 24, authorizes removal of fixed assets. Number 25, pays the bills.
Okay, Devin, I have a question. What happened with that resolution to redirect the ARPA funds back to where they belong?
I'm not sure whether.
I spoke to Emery yesterday. Can we get Emery? Last night, she said that she had a resolution, though.
To redirect what?
Redirected ARPA funds to go to Pekanakaki, and it doesn't belong there. And so she was, she sent me a sample resolution to give it back to ARPA. I'm not raising taxes for Pekanakaki, so it was going to be taken out of another fund.
We were making suggestions.
Oh, she sent it me to last.
We were making suggestions.
No, no, she sent it to me last night.
We were making suggestions.
It's not coming out of ARPA, we're not raising taxes. She told me, she explained that to you.
We're not, we're not raising taxes as.
When you take money from ARPA, I can't use it to lower taxes or to offset the taxes. So, and she sent me a sample last night, and I told her how to go up. It was late last night, and she told me she spoke to you. You're getting the money, but it's going from another fund.
But I'm saying, we haven't passed any other resolution to move money at all to Pekanakaki yet.
Well, you asked for $50,000, and you asked for another $20,000.
We didn't vote on anything.
No, I know, I know.
We're doing exploratory options.
Right, but I saw budgetary lines with the names on it. All I, all I'm asking is about that $25,000 to go back from ARPA, back into taking out. She told me it was coming out of the, some type of assessment, an easement, so we need to, while we're here, let's discuss it. Can we, can we maybe put this up for work session, so we can find out what the funds, the 50 and the 25 are going, and where they're coming from?
Just give her a moment, she could come in and explain some options.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
I know we've been working with Bill Rothar, he said he was speaking.
Yeah, I know, but.
Got some options.
Right, I found out on my own.
Some grants and so forth, that Dawn said that she thinks that there is money available to make things happen.
I found out, I found, yeah, when I asked for an accounting of our, our funds, I found out money going to Pekanakaki, and I wasn't spoken to by you, the attorney.
No money is going, let me just clarify, no money is going to Pekanakaki. We're not, we're not subsizing that. We're trying to get power to the site where the bathrooms will be, so that we are getting grants, Dawn's working on getting grants to the county, and Legislative Krupski's doing everything he best to get us bathrooms, but with bathrooms, there needs to be power there. If we put the power in now, yes, the ice rink could be tagged off of that power.
Right, so we're paid for that.
Continue the rest of the way.
Okay.
But, but it's money for the bathrooms. If Pekanakaki wasn't there, we'd still advocating here, that we need bathrooms up at that facility. In order to do that, we need power to it.
How about the location? Isn't that, the location is far away from the trails, right outside of Pekanakaki.
It's right adjacent to the trail. As you're traveling the trails, you're going to step right.
Yeah, but it's on that, isn't it?
It's right alongside.
It's right off the trail, where it comes back up from the line road.
So it's, it's a perfect location, and it's right where the current porta potty is, basically. So, well, we're trying to upgrade ourselves, so.
How many bathrooms did it bring?
That would accommodate six. It's a two-sided facility, meaning that there's men's and ladies, three men's, three ladies on one side, three men's, three ladies on the other side, so you're talking about 12. So it's six on each.
That was the one that they had presented to us, right?
Preformed, fabricated building that arrives, done and completed, and just sits on a, on a pan. It's a prefab building.
So is Emery, we were just trying to find out, we spoke to you yesterday, and you sent me a copy of a resolution, taking the money from ARPA, and it was going back to easement. This came about when I called you, and I called our, our financial administrator, and I found on the budget lines, but I have to print out in my office, when I go back here, argue, that money was being taken out of ARPA, and it was, it was going to go to Pekanakaki. And on there, there was another form that I got, that had $50,000 that was going to something. I am not sure, because that meeting was quick, but I, I, I.
I'll brief.
I asked everybody to take it out of ARPA, that is rescue money for the, hold on, let me finish, for the taxpayers. I, I, I am the person in charge of that, to bring it to the board. We already agreed on where it was going, and so I asked you two days ago with, to move it out, and we, you sent me a sample resolution. You told me you spoke to the councilman in Roswell. Okay, so there's a lot of confusion here, so that's why I called, just so we could just be on board.
Ready? So, it's an easy fix, and the original designation of the ARPA funds and the category, town boards aware, came as a result of the committee and recommendations, right? And we did that, and when we prepared that report for you, we tried to really play it very close to the law in designating what could be funded, right? So, this was highlighted to me by the supervisor. I said, well, I think we have a very easy correction then. If we can restore the money back to ARPA, we can re-present recommendations to the town board regarding ARPA funds. As to the $25,000 needed for engineering for the bathrooms, we have that in the next era easement line. Supervisor, you agreed that we would do that transfer back for the bathroom.
And I also made sure that any, any money that comes out, any fund, that I, as a CFO, should be made aware that these funds are being transferred. I wasn't aware of it. It was not until I asked for an accounting that I started seeing all these figures, and people were behind figuring things out, and it's not, I, I, I need to secure my budget, and I have to know what's in it, so I'm going to put some safeguards, that doesn't happen again.
So, my only role or knowledge was, the other day, presented to me, and to come up with a solution to fix it. I have the draft resolution, but I require Bill Rothar to plug in two of the accounts and the actual true ARPA money we received. If the town board remembers, when the federal government first announced the awards, it announced that Riverhead was getting, don't quote me on the number, 3.65 maybe. The true reality is, and, and all the money would go to the state in New York, and the state would give the town the money in two equal payments. Those monies, though, they were an estimate, and there's a formula labeled the Modified CDBG Formula that is used to reflect population poverty, housing instability, and that gives you your true number award. So the ARPA award that we got was really 3.4 something, but again, I need Bill Rothar to confirm that. But in any case, I have the draft resolution. It essentially rescinds and reverses Resolution 127, that was adopted this year, and then the second part of it, but then it authorizes the new capital project to be funded, to be funded with. You see, I see, I write insert account. I need Bill to give me the account for the easement monies. In addition, supervisor, I just want to go on the record, as part of those discussions, we also had, and you stated you would approve, that we require $50,000 for electric at Veterans Memorial Park, and another, I'm losing my numbers, was it 25 or 30 for gravel?
25.
25 for gravel, that I could also do a resolution.
So, well, that's for the parking lot. Yeah, I saw, I saw, I have to count the figures, I'll just roll over there and get it. There was another $50,000, $1,000 put into it, and, you know, I.
That's for electric, supervisor.
Also, so wait, it's 25, and it's a 50. Want me to go get the sheets that was provided?
You want me to clarify, sir? The 50,000 is to move an electric line to the bathroom, so that, and then we're working on, Dawn is working on grants to get the bathrooms. That's what the 50,000 is, but we want to get that moved over, so that it can be utilized.
And if we get a grant, it goes back to the fund, it doesn't stay.
It has the ability to do that, yes.
Right, yeah.
Dawn is working for that.
Right, I want to try to.
But we, we don't want to put off moving that electric.
Now, how much more? Because I think they were trying to get money for, for architectural plans from us. How much more is this going to cost Pekanakaki?
But we're not paying anything, this is not Pekanakaki. We're not paying anything for the plans.
They're right there, they're within vicinity, and we have a contract, so that we are going to.
These are, our commitment to them was that to allow them to tag off of our electric at our future site from the bathrooms. So that's it, it's not, we're putting, if Pekanakaki left today, I'd still be saying, I need $50,000 to put electric, we need bathrooms at that facility.
Which is still going to walk back?
Yes, because it's busy. Yes, it's busy, and, and it's going to be, it, it, go, I encourage you to go there on a Saturday and Sunday, the lot is full.
I've been there, yeah.
It's, it's busy, and, and we have one porta potty up there. It doesn't work.
Well, and, and I know that you were the one that was driving these funds, but I think in the future, when you want to look at budgets, and you just come into my office, let me know, because, you know.
Lisa, I've been talking to Bill, and respectfully, you, you've had medical issues, whatever, and, and I simply asked him, he said, I will be meeting with you, I will talk to, we discuss ideas that he's stated to me, he's bringing to your table when you're available.
Okay.
So I've done anything to circumnavigate. I've asked him, and he said, I got to talk to the supervisor, and I will come back with you with direction, and that's exactly, I believe, what he did.
So, I think, I hope, for both of you, that I've clarified it, what I've stated represents the conversations I had with you.
Yeah, to, to find out that taxpayers' funds are going to places, because, and, and I, I'm not aware, I bring in up the medical issue, I very rarely missed a meeting, I've been on the phone calls, I've worked from home if I could, and when I was really in serious condition, and by the way, the medical, the public doesn't hear, I had reconstructive surgery on a call on my knee, and it's at the final phase of getting back to working, so. But I've always been available forever, and anybody, even the media, when they call, I'm always available, so let's try to keep the medical stuff out.
No, but I, but I, but putting the electric to the bathroom allows a better opportunity to get grants, because now it is a ready facility, and that we have about.
Right, that's what we should have discussions on.
If we don't do that, and we try to get grants for the bathroom, they're going to go, you can't power it, you can't get water to it. So we're trying to put the infrastructure right there in a box, right next to where it's going to go. So Legislative Krupski's working on it, Assemblywoman Jody Giegler has been great, and she's thinking she's going to try to get some money to the state, but we need to be ready, so that they say we can accept the grant, and it's ready to go, that we're still not sure.
Okay. So maybe, maybe you should give us updates. Maybe with the Pekanakaki, every so often, if anything major happens, and money's being moved, we'll let my office know, and then we'll.
I'm just going to keep saying, it's not for Pekanakaki, it's for bathrooms up at the facility.
But it's still my fund, right? Chief, I need to know all this stuff.
But you keep saying, we're not giving anything to Pekanakaki.
Okay, whether it's Pekanakaki or not.
Public needs, so you know that, they're not, it's not for that.
Anytime funds get moved from one account to the other, I am directing the entire office, the entire town, and make sure you notify the supervisor, that's it.
Can you move on, please?
We're all the time, we appreciate the bathrooms, watch.
We're moving on.
I will.
Bayrod's losing patience.
My friend Karen's more than me, because she'll like quit the walk, leave me halfway out there.
Okay, so we're going to move on, and, okay. We're going to go into, back into executive session, if anybody has anything else to say.
Get a dinner break?
A dinner break, we have a, we have a lengthy discussion, and we have quite a few items to continue. Can I have a first and a second to go into executive session?
No, we're being personal.
No move.
Can we get second?
I'm sorry.
Can I get a second to go into executive?
Second.
I'm being a brat. Go ahead, you had a question?
I was being a brat.